I will call the December 10th regular council meeting to order at seven oh five. Can all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which is Spanish. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations or presentations tonight, so we'll go to public petitions, communications, and public participation. On any subject with the jurisdiction of the town council, there's a two-minute limit for each resident. So this time residents can come up and speak in this day and evening address.
I'm laughing formerly one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. Hello, town council. This will be my final town council meeting that I will be attending. As you may or may not know, I have sold the property of one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road immediately following the resolution to the potable water situation that I've been speaking about in person for the past one and a half years. On one hand, I am grateful for the work of the roadsalt task force, the town council, and the town manager's office for resolving this potable water issue, both to my satisfaction, but also to that of the health district and to that of Deeps. On another hand, I am still left with some concerns about the length of time this action took to resolve, given the fact that the town was never able to fully shake liability despite several reports from different consultants, some of which were handpicked by the town. There were needless delays that should not have been allowed to happen, and I feel strongly that this project finally only began to move at an acceptable pace once I began to interact directly with my legislators at the state level. I hope for the sake of other residents that have been identified by the town through reports as having contaminated wells through no fault of their own, that the town is taking a better and faster approach to resolving their issues and learning what they did, what can be done better, so that it can be resolved in a more timely manner. I still have some unresolved business with the town from my time owning one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. And while I'm not on that, on that as much, I'm not on a deadline as much as I was previously with the selling of my house. My hope is that we can reach a resolution sooner rather than later on that front as well. I have never asked anything of the town in an effort to enrich myself, but only rather to be made whole, so that I am, before this ordeal begins. On some level, I will miss being here, and I think that I learned a lot about small government and what happens in the local level, much more so than most. And for that, I am thankful. Have a good evening, and I wish everyone the best moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else who would like to speak online? In person? Online? All right.
Dennis Deegan, six eighty-nine Collins St. Road. Just a quick question, I haven't had a chance to gone away to see whether or not, curious if there was any kind of a link showing what town council reviewed by the UConn students, sticking with the ninety-five sidewalk and safety improvements. Says here that it was presented on December fifth, I guess at UConn somewhere, and the town plans to attend their presentation and looks forward to seeing their proposal. Any input on that, or is there any link to that presentation or what they're thinking?
It's just back and forth, but I can ask Brian to address that.
Yeah, 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 thanks. I forgot, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't. But anyway, so if someone at some point would be willing to share that and some perspective, and if there's nothing there now, when that might be available, so everyone here in town can kind of get a look, see what the UConn students have proposed. Fair enough? Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? What's? All right, I'm going to close public participation. You can now go to public hearing items, of which there's none. And that'll bring us to reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. So, with Colleen, update, can't remember what met, if anything.
Yeah, Firehouse, I'm so committed, meet next week, just to know like the agenda. You know, one of the items might be just revising subcommittee members. Since he said, now, even us, we have to point somebody to her spot. And I think Megan said something else, but it's gonna be really late, and as far as our we're not gonna meet.
Yeah.
We'll close that out in the council. Go next month to just close out that subcommittee altogether.
I don't have a whole lot for E H H D, CROG. Got my meeting materials from them, so I'm in the loop with what's going on. I don't know, Brian, do you have anything to add for CROG or E H H D?
No, our meeting, our meeting got postponed, it's next week.
Okay. And I think that's, that's all for boards and committees, so you can go to reports, council liaisons, so I'll go to you.
So, the town recreational advisory board met last night. Bruce, who I, he's always great to work with, he just gave updates on the winter programming that started. He's all out of his ARPA funding, so he had given families of talent, I just found with the ARPA funding. Brian, and that sounds from your community report, but four hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred dollars, which is a huge saving for families in town and helps boost up hopefully, you know, people will keep coming back, even though there's no more funded stuff for that. A person from the public, Jim Hay King, he's asking the recreational advisory board for a memorial bench at one of the parks for Iran Blake. So they're looking at that, and they're gonna be setting more information up to Bruce later this week about it, I think. And he did mention one thing that will be in this operating budget request to the town manager. That is a recreation, full-time recreation coordinator, which is eleven plus hours more a week. And I think when I asked him, it would be an additional forty-six thousand dollars if the person took benefits as well, let's talk. Whatever she takes out. And there's good reasons for her to go full-time, because their programs are getting much bigger, I guess the woman's free. So that's up to Brian to help his conversations, but he did bring that up last night.
Alex, do you have any updates from boards and commissions that you are liaisoned to? Please, I'm muted.
Hi, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, so I was trying to get this video going here, too. It looks like the host has to let me do a video, but, no, I just wanted to share as far as the Talon Conservation Commission. I just wanted to put a big thank you out there to the volunteers, the Talon Conservation Corps. Really show how tough these guys are. Two Saturdays ago, they were installing signs, removing yards of barbed wire, hauling out trash, cleaning up the trailhead. This was all at the Becker Conservation Trail, so big shout out to them. Those guys do really a fantastic job of keeping all of our trails clean and presentable all throughout the year. So other than that, that's really all I had. Happy to be back tonight. I've been busy lately, but hopefully can come back in person soon to see you guys, so.
Thank you, Alex. Joe?
Okay, whoop. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I cannot do video either. So the agriculture commission met last week, and it was a pretty quick meeting, but there were three things that were discussed. And the first one is that the, the winter, I guess not the winter, but the indoor farmers market is coming to an end. It ends this month. So that'll be wrapping up, and there won't be a farmer's market again until springtime. Secondly, they're hosting a meet and greet for local farmers, not only the Talon farmers, but also other local towns to sort of get the farming community together so that folks can get to know one another and maybe even make the farmer's market a little bit bigger and involve other additional farmers as well from other towns. And lastly, they're still looking for logo submissions, because they're looking to update their logos, so they've reached out to the Talon High School. Haven't received anything, I believe, from them yet, but they're reaching out, I believe, to the community now to see if they can get some logo ideas. And I believe they're offering, I believe, a voucher that can be used at the farmer's market for the winning logo. That's it.
Sounds fun.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, for me, the economic development commission met last week. And they, the two big things that they discussed were the tax abatement draft, the attorney has drafted some draft ordinance that they reviewed, then they gave some feedback to that, so we'll revisit that in January before it gets put on a council agenda. And then they also spent a lot of time discussing this broader economic development that they've been working on. And it's been an ongoing conversation with that group. And Chair, Chairwoman of that commission, Rita Zegari, always likes me to put in a pitch for, people are interested in volunteering above the EDC. It's a, it's a good board, and there are a couple of them, so just letting residents aware of that. All right. That brings us to new business, item eight one, consideration of a resolution approving the revised senior services caseworker job description. Turn it over to our town manager for introduction of that item.
Thank you, Chair. Earlier in twenty twenty-four, one of our caseworkers at the senior center retired. Rather than hire right away, we tried to show some money, save some money through attrition in our budget. And that's, that's what we did, that we're using, we plan on hiring soon. Prior to doing that, we took the opportunity to update our job description attached. Is a red line version with the changes here is Bev Bellidy, our human services director. Mike Wilkinson is online as well, our human resources director, if to discuss any changes.
Yeah, I'll just mention, yeah, Bev wanted to kind of update the job description. This often happens once an employee leaves, particularly if it's been a long time. Bev wanted to update some of the terminology, and we changed the title to be more up to date and also kind of update the responsibilities. For example, we don't do the Meals on Wheels program anymore, and that's in the old job description. So that's kind of an example of what was updated. So it's kind of just bringing it up to current standards that we would like before we advertised.
Thank you. Any counselors have any questions, comments on item eight one?
I do not.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward, it looks like it's mainly just sprucing up the verbiage, it doesn't look like it's making crazy. All right, aside, there's no other comments. Best second entertain a motion to adopt the draft resolution in eight one. Does anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, yes.
All right, I'll make some motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, second. Why, you got two people online, online.
Okay, I'll let Joe have that one.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Although, well, it's, we got higher participation, so we'll do a little call vote. Alex?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Colleen?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, so that passes unanimously. Eight one is adopted. It'll go to item eight two, consideration of a resolution to declare the fire vehicle two thousand and seven Ford F three fifty Super Duty. You can read the VIN number for yourself as surplus property with the town talent.
All right, as required, we have to go through this process when we surplus a piece of equipment. This is a two thousand and seven Ford F two fifty that has reached its end of life or end of service with Talon, at least to be safe. Its frame is rusted, a lot of rust below the bed, and frame mounts are rusted out as well in the cab corners. We're looking at about sixteen thousand dollars to repair it. This is the vehicle used by fire police typically. They show up on scene, they're the ones that put up the barricades, roadblocks, and they're highly visible out there and directing traffic. Frontline vehicle. We've worked out a plan to replace it with Chief Laitel, who's here, if you have any questions. If we surplus it, we look to get in the neighborhood of about five thousand dollars for it. It would go back into the ambulance reserve fund, which is where it was paid for when it was purchased. And again, it's required a resolution from council to surplus it. Any questions?
Any council, have any questions on item eight two? Joe?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Remind me again how we, we get rid of the vehicle, we auction it, how do we, how do we advertise for that again?
Chief Laitel?
So what we'll do is you have to declare it as a surplus from the asset listed now. Once that's declared, then it gives me the permission. What I use is the GOAT Deals website, which is nationally out there, and we've been very successful selling a lot of our used stuff. And once you give me that permission, then I'll post it, and we put it up in the VIN, and then we take the VIN, you know, high to the VIN, we put a VIN reserve on it. We've been very successful.
Okay, thanks, John.
Anybody else? Somebody else does, I just had a couple clarify, so is it in the capital improvement plan now, Brian?
We will level it out in the capital improvement plan, that, that's an important vehicle that we want to retain.
Okay. And the timing, like, once we declare something surplus, do you have, like, a timeline you have to get rid of it by? Or is it just kind of, now you have permission, you can do it whenever it makes sense you have?
Lisa, is there a timeline?
No.
No.
Okay. That was all I had. Yes, so no further questions, I can entertain a motion to adopt draft resolution as written in eight two.
I'll vote.
I think I heard Colleen first, but Alex, do you want to second it?
Yeah, I will second.
Perfect. Any discussion? All right, Alex?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi. Hi.
Colleen?
Hi.
I'm an I as well, so that motion passes unanimously. Right. That brings us to item eight three, consideration of a resolution to approve the revised personnel policies and procedures.
Great, so this, again, this is going to be, as you said, a revised personnel policy based on a new state bill related to a paid sick leave. It's state mandated paid sick leave benefit that requires a minimum of forty, forty hours of sick leave per year. For the most part, the town of Talon exceeds the expectations in this bill attached. However, there are nine employees at less than twenty-four hours a week that this would apply to. It wouldn't take effect until January of twenty-seven, so we have time to budget. The minimal impact this would have on our budget at any rate, but we have to make the change, and we have to do it through this procedure here. Mike Wilkinson's online, if you have any questions. And a copy of the bill is attached, and a copy of our red line policy is also attached.
Thank you. Any counselors have any questions on item eight three? Yes, I have one, everybody's good. So you said it has a minimal, minimal financial impact, Brian, so there's something, but it's.
Well.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so it has a minimal, so there's only nine, nine employees that affects right now when this new law takes effect, so it's only for employees that are under twenty-four hours. And again, everyone is budgeted, so we're just paying out sick leave. So it's really a loss of, you know, someone's not here, so it's really a loss of work. But it is budgeted, so it is a minimal effect. It's just giving some unbenefited employees up to a week of vacation per year.
Sick time, or the vacation or sick time, Mike?
Sick time. Oh, did I say vacation, sorry.
Is it part-time employees, I think?
Much of twenty-four hours.
Yeah. All right. That's all I got, I mean, it's, it's just springing our policies, basically, of course, of what the statute says, so. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution in eight three.
So I'll move.
Is there one to, anyone to second it?
Second it.
Go to Alex?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Colleen?
Hi.
I'm I as well, so item eight three passes. That brings us to item eight four. Little bit longer here, so I won't read the whole thing, but we're talking about a Department of Homeland Security and FEMA grants in relation to Alex safety.
Yeah, so this is, again, this is a grant that we want to apply for. It's very competitive, this grant, and I'm not optimistic, but we want to give it a shot anyways. I've talked it over with the chief as well as Megan, our grants person. This is basically, we're going to apply for a regional grant with some other towns, Summers and Bolton as well. We have to do a ten percent match. What we're asking for is around two hundred and ninety-two thousand for upgrades to our communications, radio communications for our first responders. Our match would then be just over twenty-nine thousand dollars, should we get that down the road. Sometimes when you apply for a grant, in order to get the application, you already have to have a resolution in place authorizing us to move forward with it, so, and that's what they're asking for here. That's, that's all this is, again, I'm not overly optimistic, we want to take a swing at it anyways.
Thank you. Have any questions upon this item? Yeah, okay, I've got a couple, there's, there's nobody. So it makes sense, and the radio makes sense, I'm not, not trying to criticize it here, but I'm just kind of curious, because I'm not too familiar with, you know, the weeds of how our, you know, our department operates, you know, what, what drove the decision to want to use this for radios?
Chief Laitel?
So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to turn this over to Frank. So what we operate on is a very subject system, and the state is switching over. Frank has had success with another town next door, Frank works for me as a full-time paid employee, over forty years of experience, and is heavily involved in the communication. So permission to turn it over to Frank to explain the technology version and where we're going.
Okay.
So, good evening. This is called the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, it's been in existence since two thousand. And it's basically for firefighter safety, and only certain things qualify, turnout gear, you can apply apparatus, you can apply certain EMS equipment. Communications is a very high priority. So when this grant comes out every year, the fire departments all look at what their needs are presently and maybe down the future. So the biggest thing that really stuck out with us this time was portable radios, the present portable radio, twenty years old. Bought and used approximately seven or eight years ago. They're no longer manufactured. Getting it repaired is very difficult. A lot of them have really weak batteries, damaged antennas, speaker mics that are not working properly. But the biggest thing is, they're a mono-band radio, one band, UHF, and they are analog. The FCC and the federal government are pushing public safety agencies to move to digital platforms, digital P twenty-five platform. The state of Connecticut has a system that the state police run on and other entities. TN is interfacing, our county nine-one-one system is interfacing with that. So the infrastructure pretty much could be free to use. We just need to get portable radios that are capable of working in that band. They're not cheap, they're just under five thousand dollars a piece with accessories and programming. I would add that not only do they have digital capabilities to get onto the state system, they'll also have legacy capabilities to get on the old system, and will also have digital capabilities to talk to the schools, which operate on a system called DMR, Digital Mobile Radio. It's another digital type format. So it's a great opportunity, and Brian says he doesn't have a lot of faith in getting it actually. The priority for portable radios is extremely high. The fact that we're running this as a regional grant puts us even higher. Of the radios that we're asking for, asking for about one hundred and thirty-six radios between the three towns. One of the highest priorities is if you have a riding position that doesn't have a radio, we have twenty riding positions that don't have radios. That is the highest priority of the grant. The second priority is to replace old or outdated equipment, and just a tad below that is what the rest of these portals are. So that's basically the explanation.
There's a state infrastructure of a radio system that I was working with prior to coming to this position. It should be a priority for the town to jump on that system, and this would assist with that, in, in that, we don't, no longer have to build out our own system. The state has their own system, we just need to buy the portals, and that's what this is.
Thanks for providing that background. It sounds like we might even have a chance, we might, if we did not get the grant, we'd have to go this way anyways, have to spend it out of our own budget.
You know, I spoke with Dr. Bullet two weeks ago about radios and direction we're going to go in. Neither Dr. Willard nor I are experts. We want to, we want to, we kind of want to get a roadmap of, like we did with public safety, like we did with DPW, a roadmap of where we need to go in the future in merging, and how do we merge with the state system? So down the road, you might look for a shared expense between BOE and the town on a consultant plan on communication.
Okay. See, a counselor has a question?
Yeah, just more of a statement, I just, I, I think being able to bump out of analog and able to interface with the schools is imperative at this point. I know that John and everybody over there does the best they can with the equipment that we give them, but if we're able to modernize this a bit and upgrade our communications, I'm all for it, so.
Thank you. Got one more comment, and let's, anybody else does? Look like it. So the other two towns that we're going, I mean, with are Summers and Bolton, and are they, I guess it's not through their councils yet. I have official letters from the CEOs granting permission to apply, they, they're telling me their town. Okay, before we make it. Okay.
I would add too, that there's going to be an MOA memorandum agreement signed between all three towns. We don't have, have it in it at the time we put the grant in, it was a week Friday. I do have a sample one that I got from the government, where we can modify that, adjust it. And it's basically going to state who's getting what, who manages the grant, and what your matching amount is going to be.
So, okay. Thank you. And I think in the description it said, you know, we're going to need to pay ten percent of the costs, and we're in the process of figuring out where those funds would come from, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
I see Counsel J has a question?
Yes, so Alex, to expand on your, your point, is, is any of this, or was any of this in the capital budget? Anywhere in the years out that we see? And if not, what was the plan for, for the equipment that we currently have, if we haven't built this into our capital budget already?
John, was it in there?
So we discussed it, but the overall price tag to put something like this, and try to go out for a couple of years, and with the high probability of the communication being the high, you know, probability at a state level, we figure we have a good chance to go this direction, otherwise if we end up failing out, then obviously we'll have to split it over a couple of years, but we're due, we're due for a grant, so.
So Joe, another thing is, like I said, that how we're going to pay for this down the road was discussed, you know, because Walt has impacted with his, he has a large amount of radios and the bus company, the state doesn't love the idea of the buses jumping on board. It can be done. Like I said, we're we want to get a good path forward on where we need to go, but getting on the state system is certainly where we want to go. And this is, if we can get this cost, we want to jump on it.
So, the, the grant, I mean, if I heard correctly, we still have to cover fifty percent of the costs, right? So the grant only covers half?
Ten percent. You only have to cover ten.
The grant only covers ten.
No, the grant covers ninety, we only have to come up with.
Oh, sorry about that, okay. So that, that's much, much better. Okay, so if, and when, and when potentially is this grant awarded?
The application's due next week, and then it's, it's up to, there's a FEMA that's doing it.
Yeah, it's like a three-month time period where the
Right, yeah, it's like a three-month time period where they electronically score your grant for all the data you put in it. If it scores high enough electronically, it goes to what's called peer review. And then three different reviewers read your narrative. You have to put a half dozen different narratives in there. And then they rate that again, and you get a number and they basically start shelling out money from the top number until they run out. That's kind of how it works.
Okay, is that money shelled out within six months, within a year? How long does that typically take?
Usually it's around six months and then you have a year to warm up after you get the money.
Okay, so this would hit, I'm just trying to think of when. I mean, it's it's obviously not going to hit our budget other than than ten percent, which is pretty minor, which I'm sure we could cover somewhere. So it doesn't sound like it's a big deal if we get the grant. If we don't get the grant, excuse me, then. Somewhere we want to look to put this in the capital budget by the sounds of it, if it's if it's this critical of of an improvement. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so Brian, if, I don't know. I don't know by the time this grant gets approved, we're going to have our budget proposal out there, right? So are you going to assume we're going to get the grant when you build out your budget this year or?
No.
So we don't get the grant?
Can't, I can't do that. What I what I would do is is look to the chief or Lisa or whatever the or the new finance director. As to where we should, where we can find that money or how we're going to come up with that money. Lisa, do you have any, would you have any direction at this point?
Depending on the dollar amount. Did you say it was like thirty thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not huge.
So for that small amount, you know, we could go to the Capital Non-Recurring Fund. We can use fund balance. One thing, you know.
Could we use the ambulance reserve?
We'd have to look at it because we're real tight on that fund with the capital plan.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Councilman Noonan?
Yeah, this was a more of a question for Don or really whoever could answer it, but you're you're mentioning the. The data implementation that is then further peer reviewed. Is there any way that it's incentivized just with our aid that we offer Yukon? And really all of the MBAs that are dealt with out on the highway, or is that not part of that data collection?
So the nice part about the data collection is this is going to be a regional grant, which. Or one of the first towns reaching out to other towns. Two towns adjacent and neighboring us have been successful with last year to do. Of getting the same grant for these head radios and stuff like that. So without being in the same county as the other two towns, just that. Just received it with the year to two years. We should be showing a matrix that we're tying into the county regional plan.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from counselors? Great. Looks like. Discuss the item, so I'll ask for, I'll entertain a motion for item eight four. Right, councilor, you get to check me some motion. Is there a second for motion?
I'll second. Go ahead, Joe. Second for Joe.
All right. So Councilman Noonan? I think that was an eye. Did he mute it himself as I said?
Yep, I.
Okay, Councilor Shay?
Hi.
Councilor, you to check?
Hi.
I'm an eye as well. So motion passes unanimously. There you go. All right, so we can move now to item eight five, which is discussion of the use of proceeds of the NOS tax.
Okay, thank you, Chair. With with the cannabis dispensary butter coming into talent. Based on the the law that the legalization of cannabis, there's a cannabis sales tax revenue that's due to the town based on. The business at Butter and they are billed out, I believe, quarterly. And we collect, the town collects revenue as a result. Thus far, the town has collected since the opening of Butter thirteen thousand dollars. And. This is just a discussion on what we're going to do. With that money. Now, I was asked to do some research by then Chair Stargarter and that is attached. Basically, some towns have no policy, some towns have a policy. Or resolution, so it's kind of, it's kind of all over the board. Basically, though, it is, it is well defined as to what we can use it for. You could see it listed. There, I have my preferences, but that's irrelevant. You guys certainly can discuss.
Thank you, Brian. So I've got my comments, but I'll go around and I guess it's like Councilman Noonan already passes his hand up, so I'll go first.
Yeah, I take it, I didn't know if if you had a certain way you'd want to proceed with this, but I I was just curious to hear, you know, Town Manager Brian Foley's. Opinion first, it's kind of where his head's at and. Maybe we could kind of table a- after he discusses what he's thinking or. Just because he's got the research already done on what some of the other towns do.
Yeah, I can give my my, just my two cents how I think. We should proceed just organizationally if that helps. I I think tonight is just a good opportunity for us to have a casual conversation about what we feel the fund would be good for. Ask any clarifications about the statute. And certainly, I think it would be good to get Brian's opinion upon that, but I want to hear everybody's opinion too. Let's see if we can come to consensus, then I think once we kind of have. Some guidelines defined, then we can go and in a future meeting, have our attorney draft up some language and. You know, proceed with with a policy or ordinance that's direction council wants to go in. But that's obviously not obligated. This is more just a discussion. So I'll. I want to get to you, Brian, but if you're all right, I'll I'll go around and have a counselor to be first. Anybody else have comments? You know.
Listen to your ideas or.
Okay. Well, I've got. A couple of thoughts here, which I can. I'll discuss. First, I have a question for Brian, though. So I think in our one-on-one conversations, we had talked potentially about. A use of the money for public safety, but I'm not seeing that as a, one of the six uses here. Is that? Was that something that? I thought error or we thought an error or is that?
No, I I believe public safety is absolutely one, isn't it, Lisa?
No, it's not in the list. However, you know, there's, there's a lot of vagueness. In my previous. There's. A lot of vagueness in the law. And. Looking at, you know, some of the things here, you have, when it comes to like public safety, for example, you have the juvenile. Review boards, you know, that our public safety is involved with that as well as our. Human Services Department, same thing as the Youth Service Bureau, so, you know. Kind of, public safety is kind of involved with some of that. Public safety is also involved with. Monitoring, you know, you have probation, custody, things like that. So, you know, that's kind of stretching it a bit. But, you know, I currently know that there's another community close by. That is putting it in their general fund budget to offset public safety. And it's part of their, just their general fund revenues and they're saying that's it's towards that. So they happen to have a full police department, which may deal with with some of the. Sort of things that are in the statute.
So it kind of could fit in that way.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you have education programs, DARE.
Yeah.
Police departments sometimes do DARE and I think our school resource officer. Was having some training for that. So there's things like that. You know, if our state troopers are doing. Dare or something in the schools. It might be stretching it, but I think it falls under the statute. In CCM, we have a contact there. Someone who can kind of give us some guidance.
Okay.
And cost. If if there was any specifics. That were being considered, we can reach out to them to try to get an opinion.
Okay. Thank you, and. This could be, I don't know, pressure work for bad or for you, Lisa, but things like the juvenile review board, Youth Services Bureau. How much does those programs cost to run per year?
Right now is just staff. To those, and then we do get funding from the state that helps fund offset that cost.
Okay.
Twenty-nine thousand for the Youth Service Bureau.
Okay.
So we do, but my staff has also worked with other towns because other towns are grasping this issue too. And focusing on what some of the funds. Sort of just, you know, look at that we haven't had any conversations with Brian yet.
Okay. So good staff, I mean, staff that support other things as well, right? Because you, I know you have a very large department, so imagine there's. That people necessary.
We might be bringing in other programs. It might be increasing a job training, youth employment program for someone. You know, maybe with public safety models. Safe driving and drug prevention campaigns. Once again, we, you know, I would sit down with Brian and. Have a conversation about some of our ideas.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so. I was going through the list. I'll just give my thoughts and I'm here with Brian to say too. You know, I think some of these causes or some of these things here might not necessarily be super applicable to talent. Streetscape improvements or the neighborhood developments, specifically where the retailer is located. There's, I mean. Fields don't comment, so it's not like it's very rundown. Area, I don't think, you know, you'd spend a ton of the money there. Education programs are youth employment and we could potentially use it to offset some of the costs that the Human Services Department has or public safety. Same thing with number four, mental health, addiction services. I think, you know, it might be based to use some of their money to offset education spending. Or use it, use it for that. I guess kind of my general philosophy is I'd like to use this to help support some of our existing programs. First, and whatever we do, I don't want to. I don't want to be so rigid where we end up having funds that are just sitting there we can't use. I don't think that really benefits anybody. So. Brian, I guess I'd like to hear your response.
I agree with what you said.
Yeah.
That I don't, I would, I don't want to tie it down. You know, when something like this pops up, my first go-to is Lisa. And I ask her what her opinion is, what's best, what's the best fiscal move for the town and this money now? I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to be a ton of money, but every year in the budget, something comes up. Things pop up. I would, I would love to throw it all at public safety. It's just too gray for a town without a police department. For us to do that. But there's certainly traffic enforcement, street signs, someone's always asking for signage and speed enforcement and signage. Different things we can do to improve the design of roads to help improve traffic safety. And that's easily tied in through drugs driving, which is obviously a big problem around the country. With law enforcement trying to catch up on how to enforce and such. I like community and civic engagement efforts. That can go in a lot of different directions and try to really boost morale and. Different events around town in that regard. As far as mental health and addiction services, we're already getting. A lot of money through the federal lawsuit settlement from the opioid folks. And and so, you know, I, we're doing all right there, you know, and I want to keep it loose. Someday if that money goes away, we'll have this. To fall back on. I do not want to lose that addiction specialist. So I guess what I'm saying is. A lot of towns do not have policies. It's just considered each year during the budget process. That's what I would ask at this point. In the absence of the, because I would love to throw it at public safety. It's just too great for us. So that's all.
Okay. So just sorry, just maybe clarify. So you're saying, don't have a policy, just go by the statute?
Yep.
Money, so. Just so I understand, so where does this money sit now?
Is it, we developed, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Lisa developed.
Go ahead, Lisa. Yeah.
We, for the time being, I've separated it into a separate fund. So we're collecting and accounting for it in a separate fund. Once you decide what route you want to go with this, then. You know, that the funds could, if it's part of the general fund budget processing, you're a, but certain ones allocated. We could use it just like we do the stabilization when you say you want to take. Thirty thousand in the general fund. It could be transferred or the fund could be. Eliminated and just have it all as revenue in the general fund going forward, if that's what you want to do. But for the time being, I'm trying to segregate it. Until you figure out what you'd like to do with it.
Okay. Thank you. Well, then, Councilor Shay?
Sure, thanks. So how how many months have we collected this revenue that generated thirteen thousand?
All right, the thirteen thousand was probably about three months. We have another receivable for another month, and then today we got another billing that we're sending out. So they're they're behind. Right now, the the information we got from the state today. Was for the month of October. So, so we've got May through October. Numbers, the the October number is not in this because we just got that information today.
Okay, so have you annualized it, Lisa? Do we have an idea of like what our annual revenue is going to be from this?
Yes, it's 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 averaging about thirty-four hundred dollars a month. I estimated about forty-one thousand per year. Now, today's information was forty-five hundred for for what we collected this month. You know, I don't know if it's going to go up, go down, but on average, it's been about thirty-four hundred a month.
Okay, that's pretty good money. I I kind of like, maybe it's what both of you are saying. Is there a way we can just put this into the general fund and then identify? Costs that we're already incurring. That we could say, you know, these costs qualify for the types of costs that this sort of a fund would cover. And then instead of, you know, we then we we've got money that we could effectively use for other other types of things, but. Are we still pretty light on the types of costs that we need to incur to use this fund?
Yes. Okay. You know, there there's a number of things you can do, yes. You can, you know, if this were to go into the general fund, there's a lot of vagueness. When, you know, when I asked about the street straight, street scape improvements. I'm like, oh, right around, you know, you read it, it sounds like it's right around the business. But they, what I was told by CCM. Staff was that, you know, it's kind of big, you know, you may be able to do different streetscapes leading up to it around the town. So if we're doing. You know, mowing and things like that in the general area, that's that's a general fund. Expenditure that we're doing in public works. So you could say if it goes in as general fund money, I'm just saying an example. The work that they do, they're plowing the roads, they're they're putting, you know, salt down, they're doing. Cutting the lawns in in the the town-owned areas. We have the center median right outside Big Y there. Where we have to pay for the the irrigation there, we pay for, you know, the maintenance of that area, even though it's on the state. Road, that was something that was agreed to when the state put it in that the town would take over. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of things in our operating budget. That we could say, you know, if it were in the general fund. You can apply it towards that, towards those operations.
Yeah.
So how you chose to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the types of costs that we can, we can document pretty easily. That we could say the general fund now covers, you know. I don't think we just want to say, hey, let's increase our costs because we've got more money. I'd rather us, you know, decrease our expenses. With using this this new revenue that's coming in. And so I'd like to see that, you know, we've got documentation, we can show to the state. That says, hey, we are, we are already, we're already incurring these costs and this money is being used for that and it goes into our general fund. I mean, to me, it seems like the most efficient way to do this.
At this point, we're not even given any sort of guidance regarding having to report on how we're using it to the state.
Okay.
You know, that the same thing with the. You know, that, the same thing with the opioid money, there's, you know, we're told how we're supposed to use it, but they're not having us report anything.
Yeah.
Again, you know, your legislators, one of the other things you may want to do is say, you know, this is newfound revenue to a community, why limit it to these specific items? You may ask your legislators next time they're making laws, to maybe update the law that governs this as well. To give you more opportunity to use it for other things.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds, it sounds vague enough that I think we need clarity on what exactly we can use it for, I don't know if they need to expand it. But I think it sounds like, from what you're telling us, it needs clarity. And then, again, I'd like to just put it into the general fund and not look to find other ways to spend it if we could. That's my opinion, I know this is purely a discussion right now, but that's kind of my idea, and it sounds like, you know, what, what Brian and Lisa and actually Jacob are kind of saying.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
We'll go to councillor Noonan.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of what Brian was mentioning, this is kind of something that I've mentioned before. You know, something that I felt very strongly about and passionately about when I was running for this, which was school safety, I'm not gonna go there this evening, but I will touch on one of the smaller issues that I had heard overwhelmingly from the community. I think the most important thing really to keep in mind here is that we were all elected by our community members and folks that live in this town. And I want to make sure that their voices are heard. You know, some of the snide comments are, you know, is that the door knocking and the phone calls and the campaigning is just for PR, but I, I really want to bring the community's voice here tonight. One of the things that I had just overwhelmingly heard again and again, it's just to maybe, like Brian was saying, add more signage to the areas more intimate to the center of town. So what jumps out to me and what I've heard from, you know, folks in town is maybe getting a speed limit sign that shows your speed on Old Post coming into the green. And also one on Talon Stage, I know that we have a community member here that's on Talon Stage, I'm sure that you can attest to folks' speed on Talon Stage, you know, I'm closer to the green myself, but it's especially toward closer to the green, the speed limit is thirty five, not sixty. So we do have those signs going downhill toward the middle school. We have one that's coming into the green, coming from the post office. And then obviously, we do have one that's right in the center of the green, I think those signs are important in a way. They offer an omnipresence, you know, shy of a trooper being there, running radar. I do think it's something that's good to have, just a little extra to slow people down, especially with, with, we've seen the Harvest Fest really grow over the years, and then, I mean, everyone that was there recently for the Christmas parade can attest to the amount of kids, the amount of vehicles, you know, obviously it gets dark here, so just having something flash and maybe slow folks down, I really think that some of that money could certainly go to some added safety precaution and signage in town.
Thank you, Alex. So I guess, what I'm hearing from the council, it's a few things, remember, we don't want to handcuff ourselves necessarily with the money. We want to keep our, you know, we want to be able to, to use it to offset existing expenditures and be able to do that. Because as we all know, it can get, get tight in the spring when we're, we're discussing the budget. And it seems like that there's, there's a desire maybe for, for a bit more of a structured ordinance. Please, if I'm misinterpreting anyone's comments, let me know. But not, I'm not entirely sure what that, what that looks like, if it's something simply, maybe it's a policy expressing the council's, council's preference for the money, and then just, we stated some of the statute here. Just to maybe give like our finance department a little guidance around a budget season, what the council felt was a, was a good decision at the time. At the end of the day, I don't, doesn't sound like we want to really micromanage these things. Yes.
So, so Lisa, you said that you have this enough fund, that doesn't, is it, is there a name to that fund, is it something that the council needs to approve for that fund?
It's special revenue fund, and at some point, it would be good if the council blessed it. There's times that we do, you know, special revenue funds in, in the accounting realm of things. I just felt it was best until we figured out what we're gonna do and bring it to you, of course, to determine which way you want to go, so. It would be good to have the council approve the fund, but by doing that, that's when you would normally set up an ordinance. Because the ordinance governs the fund and the uses of it. And, and how, you know, how, if it's non-lapsing, how it's, how it's invested, whether the investment or any stuff, there's a lot involved when you set up an ordinance. So at some point, yes, we would bless it, or you would may say, we just want this as part of your general fund revenue sources in your budget. And then you don't have to have a separate fund or separate ordinance or, or anything, you could just give manager direction that it's gonna be. You know, you either have a resolution that says it, or whatever, that, you know, it's just part of the general fund revenue, and it's to offset the purposes outlined in the state statute and with the manager's recommendation. So it's not to add to the budget, but maybe add the revenue to the budget, which would offset maybe already existing expenditures. Or what the manager may want to recommend in his budget process for use of those funds. So you could order a resolution that way, or you can do, like I said, you could do an ordinance and specific, but you really don't want to make it so difficult that you'll never do any, be able to do anything with the money either.
If you put it into the, just the general fund now, and it's specific to certain things, is there, is that getting messy, like trying to figure out the forty thousand dollars and you only can spend on certain things?
Well, you, you would earmark it, so for example, you know, there's, there's, depending on what route the council and the manager decide you would like to go, okay. There's a lot of already activities that we are paying for out of the general fund, such as our youth service staffing in the bureaus. It could just be a revenue source to offset the mill rates and you're not, you know, it's reducing taxation. But then it's not specifically adding anything, it's just becoming a revenue source. Again, you can also say have it as part of the general fund, but it would have to be used in the year that you collected it towards a specific source, so if you're saying I'm putting forty thousand dollars in as a revenue in the general fund, and you wanted a specific item under the statute that it covers, then you would only have that one year to focus on it. So if it's in a separate fund, it gives you a little more leeway in that respect. It all depends on how you want to use this money.
Okay. As a proof. I, I just wanted clarity on the.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, you were going right where I was gonna go with that, which is, I was gonna ask, what's the best practice for having a fund like this, which it sounds like having an ordinance here, some sort of blessing from the council would be appropriate to do, I think that would be a good direction, open up, open up thoughts, but I think that would be good, so all the funds that we have have some sort of legitimacy for a lack, lack of a better term, not, not, not an accusation.
No, absolutely. An ordinance, if you're having a separate fund, you probably would want to have an ordinance or some sort of governing resolution regarding that fund.
Okay. Alex said it again from last time, or is that the new one?
Yeah, I think that just was left up, sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. So what, maybe I propose to the council would be we have our attorney look at drafting an ordinance that would create, or I guess, I know it's in existence, but establish a fund for cannabis tax revenue. Copy, and in that, obviously, we would discuss it, but maybe discussion, copy and paste the language of the statute into it. And then maybe include some language, it would simply say, you know, the preference of the council to use this to offset existing expenditures for, you know, like through six here. Obviously, we would discuss this, just think, keep all rolling. It looks like councillor Shay and councillor Noonan, some questions, I'll go to councillor Shay first.
Yeah, sure, I, I'm just not sure, we're jumping the gun on having the attorney draft an ordinance, I think we really need to decide if we just want the money to go to a general fund first, or if we want to just keep a separate fund, sort of add more accounting to the whole process, so I think, I think that's step number one, before we ask an attorney, we incurring more fees to develop an ordinance.
Okay. Councillor Noonan?
Yeah, just to kind of go along with what councillor Shay is saying, I, maybe just put, put forward, we could put forward a motion right now to, to vote on where we'd like to see allocate the money. I'm certainly in agreement with you, Jacob, about getting this on paper to really fortify what this will look like in the future, and maybe broaden the scope as to what the verbiage says inside of the ordinance as how we allocate the money. But I think maybe taking Joe's route first can certainly organize this a little bit better.
Thank you. So, if the money just goes straight up into the general fund, just kind of trying to figure out what that means, because if it goes into a general fund and you're saying you're not separating it out, does that mean you're not keeping track of it?
Not that we're not keeping track of it. If, if the resolution that the town council makes states that you want it to be part of your general fund revenue, then the resolution should also include language as to what it should be used for, okay? There would be a separate revenue line item for the revenue in the general fund. So you would be able to see how much revenue is coming in. Now, the expenditure side of it, it would all depend on what your resolution says it should be used for, so if it's supposed to be revenue to offset, I'm just making an easy one here, offset the youth service bureau services costs, which we have in the general fund already, then, you, you know, we're not gonna be itemizing every one of those costs, because there's really no reporting requirement, but we would want to make sure that the revenue coming in is gonna cover whatever costs that we have budgeted. So we have salaries in those areas, you know, it, it all depends, I mean, if the revenue starts really taking off, you're gonna have, want to have more than one option of what it's gonna offset, so again, you'd probably want to have language identifying everything that's possible with the manager's use in the budget process, so, you know, the revenue comes in, you account for it, you'll know how much revenue you receive in any one year, if you did that in the general. And we would budget for it like any other revenue that we receive.
Okay, but it sounds like in any case, what you're talking about is still, you know, a resolution, you know, admitted in some language to govern how this works.
To, to basically give direction on the use of the funds.
Okay. Is that something, Brian, we could do without the attorney? Just draft some languages to how it would be governed, or would you not recommend?
Well, I mean, we can draft it, I would want our attorney to have some, look at it anyways, Jake.
Okay.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
Normally, what we would do, depending on whether it's an ordinance or a resolution or whatever, the staff with the manager would work together to prepare something, and then it goes to the town attorney to review it, put his input, make sure it's legal. At that point, then the manager would recommend to you the draft to review and consider. So we usually don't get the attorney involved until once we compile. As, as staff working together.
Okay.
He doesn't usually write the ordinance.
Yeah, the cost would be lower.
Yeah, it would just be his review of whatever it is, whether it's resolution, ordinance.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. My concern, I'll go to councillor Noonan in a minute, but I guess my concern with just not having anything is, you know, right now, the state doesn't seem to be carrying that much, just of how we handle things, but, you know, it just concerns me that the laws on the books the way it is, and if they did start to clamp down on it a little bit, we could find ourselves in some hot water. You know, so I would, I'd prefer to have at least a resolution. We don't need to write something that's on our pages explaining how we're gonna use this, but I think it would be, could just have something.
Now, the, the, in your packet, I think Brian included some information he got from other communities, there was one who drafted an ordinance, one who drafted a resolution, and pretty much it was just basically taking verbatim, verbatim the law, giving the town manager the authority to recommend town council in the budget process.
Yeah.
How it was to be used based on those items.
Okay.
That's all in your packet, though, I think.
It's kind of the same thing almost like, but the harvest of the farm, it's only allocate, you can only use it certain ways. Right, it's very similar, but then we don't have an ordinance, I think we should have one, just like you said, Jacob. Some people aren't ready for that, maybe further, I don't mean discuss it back from there, but right, similar, it's, you can only use it.
Yeah, the advantage to having it, y- you know, it's all gonna be dependent upon your goal as a group, okay? The advantage to having it in a separate fund with an ordinance that governs it allows you to carry over the funds till you're ready to use them and then allocate them. So, once it's in the general, the, the advantage to it being in the general fund is that it'll offset your mill rate unless you're gonna add an expense in the general. And if you're gonna add an expense for it, you might as well just have it in a separate fund where you account for it separately. You know what I mean, but if you're gonna use it to offset existing services, then it's much easier just to, to put it in the general fund, and at the end of the year, the revenue flows to, you know, into fund balance after your expenses are covered, if there's any excess revenue, it goes to fund balance and stays there. It just, it's just, it all depends on what route you want to go. There wouldn't be excess revenue, because there's enough expenses with streetscapes, youth services and stuff like that, unless you start selling a lot of cannabis sales.
Okay. Councillor Noonan?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, to mention where my head was at, with that. If we can have an option where we will strongly fortify our ability to have oversight on how exactly, you know, this monetary value that comes out is, is allocated, I would prefer that. And the only reason I say that is because, and I'm sure, you know, you, my, my, my constituents here on council have worked with me, you guys know what I'm passionate, fervent about. There are certain line items of things that I scratch my head at as to how and when that was used. I would so much rather have this money go toward something that we have set a goal toward that has been reviewed by our attorney, set in stone, not, not as a, you know, controlling measure, or, or something overcontrolling, but rather something with more fervent intent on what we've decided as a group, where that can go With the overreaching and and uh the biggest voice in the room of our community of where we'd like that to go. Um, and that was the aforementioned, um, which I had already stated about. You know, public safety and signage, but I think. Um, having having that as an option as an ordinance, I think is preferable to me.
Thank you. So Lisa just make sure I have it clear.
I'm I'm not quite clear myself just.
Okay, okay, I'll figure it out together. Um, so if our goal is to just. If our the purpose of the council is to primarily use money to offset existing expenditures, it makes most sense to put it up in the general fund. But it might also make sense if you do put it in the general fund and still have like a resolution.
It would be more of a resolution. If you're going to be in the general fund, I would recommend a resolution. If you're going to set up a separate fund altogether to account for it, then I think an ordinance would. In my opinion, would govern that.
Yeah.
More efficiently and better um structure of using there. I mean, if you have a resolution for how you want it to be used in the general fund. Going forward, then. Then that would be the best, in my opinion.
Okay, so there's still some governance, but it's a little less stringent, I suppose, and a little. Easier to um to work with, I guess.
It it again, it all depends on what the council desires to do.
Okay.
These funds.
Okay.
I'm not gonna lie, I'm confused. Where are we? I mean, we spent a lot of time, which is fine, but. Should we do a, I guess. I don't know where we're at. Are we voting on an ordinance tonight or we?
I don't think we're going to vote on anything.
Okay, we're voting on having them.
We could, I I think. I'd like to get to that point, maybe to.
Yeah.
Do the council maybe just make a motion if it feels comparable.
During Joe is on Joe's.
But I want to, you know, we're not.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I I think we should have a board.
Counselor Shay?
Yeah, real quick. So I I'll give you my two cents about the ordinance. My fear about the ordinance is that as a council, we have. We've really shown that we struggle tremendously to come to an agreement. On quite a few things, and this will be another layer that we're going to add on that can have hours of disagreement about how forty five thousand dollars gets spent. Which is just going to create more and more problems. I think. Uh, it's not a lot of money here, guys, but I mean, look at how much time we've already debated discussing whether or not we should have an ordinance or we should have a resolution. And it sounds to me like the resolution is written fairly vague. In that it just basically like Lisa says, copies sort of the. The guide, I don't know if it's the guidelines or the statutes that the state has put out in respect to how this. This money should be spent. And if you keep it that simple and it goes into the fund and it goes into the general fund. Then it's one less debate we have to we have to go through. And uh and we're using the money to help reduce taxpayers' costs in this town. Which is, you know, one of our main objectives here is not to keep looking for more ways to spend more money. So if we've got revenue that can help reduce our costs, why would we not want to do that? So I just think the ordinance is going to create more grief and aggravation and it's going to help.
Hey, counselor Shay, and just a question for you, just to make sure I understand. Uh, so. Your position not in favor of an ordinance separate fund. But you would be okay with having it go into the general funds with a basic resolution. Governing that funding, which would essentially be a copy and paste. Of the statute plus grasp the language saying it's the council's preference that it's used to offset expenditures. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Offset existing expenditures.
Correct.
You know, I mean, to to Alex's point, you know, if you want to talk about additional signage. Um, I I think we should, you know, that's probably a good idea to have uh to have more. Uh, more type of signage that helps, you know, protect people. Um, but I don't think it should be layered into, hey, we've got more money, let's spend it another way. Uh, I just think that's part of the overall discussion of what the town should be doing.
Well, I think at that point, it's that's almost like something you could. Put under one of these items, maybe one of the streetscape improvements, for example.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, like I said, we don't need a list seven hundred ways. That this could be spent. I don't think that's anybody's time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, I guess. I'll tell you to check.
No, I was gonna just take what Joe just said, he's right, we spent a lot of time on this, forty thousand dollars. I don't think legal, getting a lawyer and everything, I I would be, I would be comfortable with just a resolution.
Okay.
And with the guidelines within.
Okay. Did you find with that?
I think I was comfortable with that, yeah.
It seems like there's some consensus surround.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess. All I'll entertain a motion. I'm gonna, it's not pre-written, so I will.
Please.
Say it carefully. I'll entertain a motion to direct the town to draft a resolution. To govern the uses of. Cannabis tax revenue going into the general fund, which. Uh, mirrors the state statute and reflects the council's desire to have the. Uh, monies used to offset existing expenditures.
That was fantastic. That was good. That was good, Alex.
Alright.
Or Jacob, sorry, Jacob.
I I made that motion.
Okay.
Um, yeah, yeah.
Calling you the motion. Is there a second?
Go for it, Alex.
Second.
Thank you.
Alex, double down.
Yeah. Okay, uh, counselor Newman?
Um, so. I I I will, I will say, I will support that. I will say yes, uh, just because of uh. Just because of counselor Shay making some sense there with something down the road that might uh. Get us mired, so I will say yes.
Thank you. Counselor Shay?
Aye.
Here, also you to check. And I I as well, so that motion passes. Right. It moved pretty fast with you, so we will go. So it will um go to review of town council goals that were updated on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Great. As you know, you, the town council came up with a list of goals. Every six months they are reviewed. Uh, historically, this is, this process has been uh completed by council. I've tried to take some ownerships ship since I've been there and I thank all my staff. Uh, who have all contribute to um updating our goals uh and where we are. I, you'll see a list attached um. Uh, you also see, I'm sorry, a list of resolutions that were were uh you've got, you guys have passed since you've been uh since you were sworn in. Also attached, you'll see uh the previous in June um council goals and then the updated version is also attached, the current council goals uh after that. Uh, in June, I read it in its entirety. Um, I don't, I don't think it's necessary now, but tell me if that's the, you'd like me to read it. Now a lot has changed. Uh, you've had this for the last week or so to review, uh, so I'm certainly open to any questions on any that I should have.
Thank you. For calling. So I guess, because there's a lot here. If you remember correctly, we broke these up into one, two and three buckets, or no, four buckets. Um, so we can go to the first bucket first, provide efficient and high quality services in a fiscally responsible way. Um, as our manager mentioned, we've already talked about this a lot, so I. Have any, anybody has any questions or comments about the uh. Items in one, I don't care whether what letter it is, you know, we can just have a discussion about that, so. Guess we'll go through. You know, ones, any certain comments? I guess my only comment was is that it's part of the transition period with our new finance director. You know, and I'm sure you're already doing this, but I'll just say it for the record. I think it'd be great, you know. She she understood, you know, um, and what's the pay as you go goal of the council. Um, that we leave outlines, um, but I'm sure. Being a good finance director, she chooses.
We're meeting tomorrow to discuss that.
That's wonderful. There you go. And also, Arca is technically all set, so. Any other questions for? Um, I guess we'll go to number two. Remote sound infrastructure. Any questions for number two? I guess I've got questions. So I know we last reviewed the goals, the goals were to get stations. What we done by the end of the term. Um, you know, as finding myself, I find the whole council aware, you know, we just um a couple of months ago. Uh, cut the ribbon for station three forty. So we're running a bit behind where we would like to be. Um, and then the packet here, it says in November twenty twenty five deadline is likely an impossible goal. Rich.
I have some too.
Yeah. Maybe a, maybe, let's try.
Well, I think the goal here is to get it done, right?
Yeah.
In the most fiscally responsible way.
Of course, yeah.
And and so putting a time deadline on it might have been aggressive.
Yeah, so. But um, and I completely agree with that sentence. I don't want to rush the job. But. I've tried to rebase line that goal and figuring out when we're going to be able to make those repairs done.
We did discuss as a committee. Uh, firehouse committee and try to come up with an estimate, but it's so, it's so difficult this day and age, but with the addition of the firehouse subcommittee. Understand that collaboratively, um, we are moving as expeditiously as possible.
Yeah.
Um, and at no time is public safety at all um jeopardized as we move through this process.
Absolutely, and I don't think um. You know, it's certainly don't want to take it as a criticism of anybody, but I would love to see, you know, sometime, even if there there's stretch goals and. Pretty good goals that are a little bit, to me, I just think it's easier when you have those plans in place. You tend to move faster than you do not. Um, so maybe that's something we could talk about coming maybe in January.
Yeah. I'm sure I'll have a start tomorrow next week a little bit too.
Yeah, that's true.
But you would agree, I don't want to. Rush. Through anything, I think he's learned some things from past construction project. And so. I mean, still going to be optimistic.
Yeah.
At at least, you know, we'll see a lot of change, I would think some lot of changes to station, I think it's a four forty, because it's not as. Eighty three years as the other station, but. I agree with Jacob as far as having some sort of. Something that shows us where we're at. I think towards the end of this subcommittee, we start seeing more of those, so. And maybe much fantastic, so I would like to see something like that. At least we can report to people and report to the council. Where we're at in the stages of the updates of the three stations.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, we've got. Like we said, we're talking about a root replacement for four forty, you know, um, so it's lots involved. It'd be great to see, you know, maybe that could be completed. I don't know. And see what we can make to do in parallel with with station one forty. Um, obviously, we don't want to stretch some of their resources to then, you know, we want to make smart plans, how we want to approach everything, what staff should be working on, but. Be good to profit for sure.
Yes, and I I'll just mention, I'm gonna mention it here, um, this subcommittee number is supposed to be, we're going to try to. Look at station four forty before the next um subcommittee and. Um, one of my chief or assistant budget front, Jacob and I, I go on tomorrow, station four forty.
Great. Weather permitting.
Weather permitting.
It's so scary, you know, so John.
Let's get ready, you know, so if he says we can't go, then we start.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, my question to see, uh, promoting foundations, how many applications does the town? Just years of date. Okay.
Year to date.
Yeah.
Um. What did Jason's?
Look at the time, I don't know, just record, it might be there.
No, I thought it was. No, I know, in the gold, so I thought I'm ready.
Corrected, uh, it says corrected foundations, twenty five outpaced to do abatements twelve uh in twenty twenty three.
Okay. Typically, isn't it a council agenda item, but it's still a problem going on in the background, so. It was definitely a big problem for residents to um affected by, certainly don't want to downplay it.
I mean, at this point, it's kind of a well-oiled machine over there, so it's not as. I don't want to say it's it's not priority, of course it is.
Yeah.
But with the rebel going on right now, Jason has been so preoccupied with that, that. Um, maybe he didn't include year to date, but we can certainly get that information for you.
Okay, yeah.
Chair design.
Eleven new applications this year. Twenty five homes have been repaired as of this year. Twenty two of those were receiving uh abatements.
Okay, this sounds like we're on the downward slope.
I don't know if that's accurate. I don't, I don't have year to year uh where it is. I know that Jason, Jason is very aggressive. Uh, in his involvement at the state level, um, and and a leader among that, but he's. I can, whatever you want me to ask, I can ask.
Yeah. I guess my question was, Sarah Beth, you know, I. Well-oiled machine, are there any gaps, any areas that the council should be looking at or talking about more on this issue?
We just need to turn to our state leadership and to make sure the insurance fund is funded by the state. That's the gap.
Okay. The conversation.
Yep.
Any other questions upon remote sound infrastructure?
No, no question.
Go to item three, promote sound recreational opportunities. Any questions on remote sound recreation? I don't have any comments here. Um, I think this is definitely a goal that the. Town has has done a lot of great work upon. Especially with. Produce costs for residents. That it's, it's a, it's really good. That's why I only commented. Also. I think that similarly, um, we've had a lot of great success with. And some, all the different pretend that we're understanding the parade and the tree lighting went off really well and and um. Had a, you know, it was an interesting year for um the uh. Uh, fall on the green, uh, which name is escaping me for some reason, um, amen, but that that also.
Harvest.
What's that?
Harvest.
Harvest, that's, no, I can think of that. But uh. It all went well, so I think we're, the town's doing great. All right, any other questions upon that? Oh, all right, go to the final one. Four is engage citizenry to be committed to the betterment of the entire community. Any questions or comments upon gauge citizen to be committed to the betterment of the entire community? Person we go. I don't.
Thank you for, remember put this all together, I assume it's Dan and Sarah Beth, so, oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Keeping all of us organized.
Yes. We'd like to see, it's a great summer to, well, activity that's been going on, so it's, it's fun to be. Right, if there's no other comments, I think we can move off that item. And go to item eight seven, appointments to vacancies in various boards and conditions. Um, does not look like there are any permits, so I'm not missing anything, nothing was added in last night. Okay. So we can, they go to old business, of which there's none, which brings us to item ten, report to the town manager.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I want to thank, uh, the entirety of, of council for their participation in unity in the parade, the festival of lights, tree lighting. Um, it was a fantastic night. I want to thank the PCC, um, Chief Littell and, uh, his, his assistants, uh, for their, uh, involvement in the Hicksterns museum, obviously, uh, was great for us as well. Uh, Saturday is the, um, Reese Across America event, twelve o'clock, um, that should be a great event. Again, I thank the chief and all our volunteers that we have, uh, going forward, uh, with that, this being our second year in that. Um, as you know, we have the, uh, new, uh, financial officer, uh, you, she'll be introduced to you, I believe at our next town council meeting, is that right, Sarah Beth? Joe, you'll, it's gonna be the next one, okay? Um, and then, uh, we also have the retirement of Scott Howe from the Highway Public Works Highway Department, he's been here for four years. Um, and that, that has been posted, uh, with, through Mike Wilkinson, um, and I look at that as a very positive opportunity, um, for, um, some new leadership. Uh, the value, the revaluation process is underway, thanks to our assessor, uh, and Lisa. The, um, Parks Garage is moving forward. You can see the old building was taken down. They're out there almost every day. Our, our public works are doing a lot of the pre-work. Uh, this was done in an effort to save money. Uh, Megan Masa, our, our grants person and our, one of our project people, uh, is doing an outstanding job in assisting, uh, getting that building, uh, put on the, on the way to being built, uh, with Director Lappin, um, from DPW. Um, our care and share program through human services, uh, i- is underway and great. There was a, um, toy drive this week on the, on the green, our green was really busy, uh, it was fantastic. Our new, um, addiction services person, uh, Jillian, uh, certified prevention specialist, uh, and I believe Theresa, did they go to the schools and do the Narcan stuff together? Or is it just Jillian? Both of them, all right. And so this is, this is a program that, that chief and I keep an eye on, and it's Narcan with the school nurses, making sure they have enough. Um, it gets expensive. Um, the, the overdoses have changed to where you need more than one hit of Narcan. Uh, each of the offices, I'm told, has two. Um, two should carry all of our schools long enough to get them to John and his folks arriving in an ambulance, which is never far away with, uh, more Narcan should they need it. Would it, it has been, uh, somewhat, uh, quiet in that regard. Our new senior center director, uh, thanks to that validity, Kyle, uh, Sanus is, is really carving her own way and doing a good job down there. I want to thank Megan Masa, she got us fifteen thousand dollars, uh, through a state grant for cybersecurity to, uh, for our crowd, for Crown Strike, our, our cybersecurity reimbursement for that. Um, in regards to the Yukon to design the sidewalks, uh, we haven't, we hired our engineer to do it, to, to do his design for the sidewalks. Uh, that is paid through our budget, and we wanted to have that design on hand should a grant arise. Grants have, when you apply for a grant, sometimes they want you to have the project already designed and ready to go. So we hired Cardinal Engineering to do that. However, we were contacted by, um, some folks at Yukon, the engineering school program, and some folks at High Safety, and they offered to do one, a plan for us as well, um, as a learning experience for their, uh, future engineers and also to provide us, uh, maybe with some new ideas. What was provided to us, Megan and I went to the school last week, uh, to see what they had had. It was really a preliminary, hey, this is what we've done so far, and this is how we're gonna provide the, the design down the road. So it was really just a preliminary thing that they, there's no real drawings or anything like that at this point, um, from Yukon. Cardinal has submitted some different designs, it's, uh, it's, it, it's gonna be reviewed by the town, uh, moving forward. Uh, library, uh, it's going well. They had a festival of trees, uh, a fundraiser that was, uh, fantastic. A lot of, um, great things going on, including a paint-a-pet workshop, uh, where you can, you know, paint your pet, uh, you don't, we don't, you're not painting the pet, you're painting a picture. Leaving it alone, never. Oh, geez, um. Okay, moving forward. So, uh, while we're on pets, it's, uh, you know, regionalization, uh, trying to regionalize our animal control. Um, it's not easy. And I went, some of my goals, it was, you know, to, to, to regionalize our, my, my yearly review is making efforts towards regionalization. I can tell you, no one comes knocking on our door to regionalize anything. Uh, regionalization of the animal control has been entirely through, uh, efforts of the town. Uh, and that has been led by, uh, Megan Masa, who's been trying to obtain some grant funding, uh, to do that. We are working, uh, with Wellington, Ashford, um, and Stafford and Mansfield are on the periphery as well, trying to, uh, put that together. Uh, as I mentioned, the Parks Garage is underway. Herring Cole pickleball courts are wrapping up, um, and we have some walkways that we're putting in, um, to the, to the basketball court and to the pickleball courts as well from the parking lot. Um, I want to thank, uh, John, Chief Littell, and his staff, uh, for something that kind of flew right by, and that was the, uh, red flag warnings and all the brush fires they had to deal with, uh, and putting them out, you know, and the, the, the fire that never goes, goes crazy and gets huge, we, we never happened and we didn't know about it, and that's because, uh, John and his staff put them all out. It's over now, um, we're gonna have more rain than we know what to do with in about, uh, twenty-four hours. Uh, so, but, but I just wanted to thank his, his effort, all the volunteers, we're an amazing job. They put out a lot of little fires before they became big fires, including one I could throw a rocket at across the street right now. Um, I want to thank that John and his, his staff for their efforts through the recent snowstorm and DPW. Um, it did not take us by surprise. They, uh, DPW was staffed overnight, they came in at nine PM the night before, I got a call at about six PM, uh, six AM from the DPW director, uh, and our public safety director saying, it is a mess, uh, at our elevation in Talon, they recommended that the schools be closed. That was, uh, mutual, mutual agreement between DPW, uh, Chief Littell, they, they communicated that to, um, Dr. Willa, and, and he made the decision to cancel this, cancel the school. He was, I believe that was the right decision. I was out through, through all of it. We, uh, do have some weather coming and some high winds, but again, thank you, Chief Littell. He, um, has already touched base with DPW to make sure, you know, all our, all our saws, emergency equipment, everything's available, um, should we experience a lot of down trees or power outages, generators, everything's ready to go, um, for tomorrow, uh, with the wind and the rain. So I, I thank them, uh, for all their efforts through, uh, those crises and, and planning for this, this future one. Uh, Erin Barlett, our, our tax collector, uh, I want, I want to fly under the radar. She was a new hire, she's doing a fantastic job. The whole office is, um, the collection rate is up about four percent from last year, uh, so that is, uh, fantastic jobs. Thank you, uh, Lisa, they worked for her. Um, so, uh, that is all I have at this point. Any questions?
Oh, a lot.
I don't have any particular questions, I'm, but, for the thorough update.
I don't, um, I don't have any particular questions.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right. Something from Council Shay, Council Newton?
Nope, all good, very informative.
Well, then.
We're so easy on the brain.
Yep.
Yep.
It's December, we want to, no, no, it was laid back. Okay. Um, that brings us to adoption of minutes. Um, we have November twenty-sixth, regular meeting minutes approved, all entertaining motion to adopt those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion made by Council Uchech. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have this for a second.
I know.
Um, is, uh, any discussion? All right, uh, Council Uchech?
Aye.
Council Newton?
Aye.
Council Shay?
Even though I seconded that, I have to abstain since I was not present.
Okay. Um, and I, I as well.
So I think, I think, even though you missed me and you don't have to abstain.
Yeah, technically you don't. Yeah.
I don't know if that messed up voting.
I mean, do you, yeah, do you need me to, 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 to agree to it?
I.
Yeah, make it easier, I, I.
Or we can post, we can just, that, we just have to be voted on at the next town council meeting.
Yeah.
Your choice, Joe.
I'll say aye then.
Okay. All right, so those minutes are adopted, I did.
Okay.
Uh, aye. So those minutes are adopted, um, correspondence to council.
I just double-checked, I actually do not have anything, um, I don't see that. Somebody else, yeah, received something, but.
Didn't receive the late breaking email, like during the meeting.
Yeah, I just, you, you signed documents, but. No, I don't have anything, Joe.
Okay. Um.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it.
Okay, we can save it, yeah, okay. All right, um, that, uh, we'll go to my chairperson's report. I just have a couple of things I'll make note of. As Brian mentioned, we have a Reese Across America ceremony, um, this Saturday. Um, I encourage everyone to attend. Great way to honor those who have served, uh, those who have served and passed on. Um, additionally, I do want to congratulate, um, Lisa Hancock, um, who is, uh, serving as our town's finance director for many years, and this has helped us out tremendously. Um, glad you'll be staying on for a few months, um, as an advisor to help make the transition, um, go smoothly, but just wanted to thank you for all your, all your help in that role.
Thank you.
And, um, you're welcome. And, uh, finally, um, I'll just, this is our last meeting of the year. Just want to, uh, wish our town a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Um, hope everyone gets some time to, uh, spend with, uh, loved ones, and, um, we'll be back in January, starting the budget, bunch of other fun things, so. That, um, we'll go to communications, petitions from council persons. Um, we have a
objects.
So, I don't know, so you're good?
So, um, just, uh, I share your sentiments, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody out there, and also give a big shout out to our town manager for his excellent job on Fox News, providing his, uh, commentary and expertise on the, the recent investigation that, uh, led to the arrest of, uh, of a suspect. So great job by our town manager.
I can't take credit, Robert, thank you.
Well, I was just gonna say, thank you to the PCC and, uh, town fire department for joining forces, having Megan Masa's been voted back a few years ago. Um, that was really great, and I'm sure he will be working for next year, but I appreciate that. Um, same, I wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I'm not ready to say bye to Lisa, so I will not make any. You got a little more time. I got a little bit more time, and I look forward to some sound any for the Reese Across America.
All right. Um, that, we can go to our second, second public listed participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council. There's a three-minute limit this time. Um, would anybody in the room like to speak?
All right, George George, Fitch and Game Road. Uh, I'll do the simplest one first. Foundations, we just got across over a thousand. Uh, I've heard more about foundations and all last year than I did, if you want to know. I've talked to a lot of people. Minimum is three thousand, maximum is closer to eight thousand, um, so you're gonna get a lot more foundation requests in the next year's coming. Uh, the next one was the, uh, let's use some common sense on this cannabis stuff, but put it in a general fund. Uh, let's stop adding ways of spending money when we're always short of money. In all the years I've gone to meetings and budget meetings and stuff, we have all the I-wants, so public safety from the town, budget from the school budget, and everybody has I-wants, and then we always cut it down to what you're gonna get. So let's not add more things that we can't pay for to a budget that we can't already pay for, and it's gonna be a lot of cuts this spring that people aren't gonna like. And lastly, I'd like to make a public record is the fact that, uh, I'd like to know what's going on with the council members. Uh, last meeting, we were missing some Republicans, this meeting, no Democrats. What the heck is going on? I want to tell them people, the people of Talon, to know this ain't working. Thank you.
Um, are there any other comments, a line? Back to the room, anybody in the room? Right, a line, one more chance. If I may close, public participation for the night. Um, with that, that brings us to adjournments, objection to adjournment.
Yeah.
There's no objection, we are adjourned at eight fifty-two PM.